And justice for all.
Please have a seat. Again, welcome. Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Tuesday, October 15, 2013 County Council Meeting. See, we have a full house again tonight. It's somebody, a motion to open the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor, sign aye?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinances of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just for a little roadmap, I will read each application into the record. We will then hear from our staff on their analysis and recommendation. Then the applicant, if they so choose, can come up and explain the application and then answer any questions of the commission. We will then open it up to the public, where anybody in the room that wishes to speak on that application may do so. If you do speak, please fill out one of these speaker cards as well, so we can have a record of your notes. And then, once the public's hearing is over, public portion is over, we will bring it back before the commission, where we will discuss it openly and then vote on the matter. And again, this County Council will make a final determination on October 15. All right, the first application this evening is Application 19965 by Kurt Henderson, applicant/representative Velma L. Meyer and Alan Dyer, attorney in fact, owner. The application requests a rezoning change from A/F/F Agricultural District, five acres minimum lot size with floodway fringe overlay district, to RR/F/F Single Family Residential District, three acres minimum lot size with floodway fringe overlay district. The property is located approximately 600 feet east of the intersection of Shaper Road and Shaper Oaks Court. Property consists of 6.87 acres and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Thank you. The subject site is zoned A/F/F Agricultural with floodway fringe overlay district. Zonings in the area to the east is also zoned A/F/F to the west is zoned A/Agricultural, sorry. And to the south is in the city of Wentzville and it's zoned Agricultural. Land uses include to the north vacant and single-family residential to the southeast and west. The Future Land Use Plan shows the property to be developed with low-density residential. On this vacant site, they were proposing to divide the site into two three-acre parcels, so they need to rezone to the RR zoning to accomplish that. Say the portion of the site is in the 100-year floodplain, they'll have to make sure that the homes are elevated to at least one foot above the base flood elevation. That's probably not going to be a problem, the topography slopes steeply down to Perri Creek, which is the northern border of the site. So Steph is recommending approval based on the 2025 master plan, calling for low-density residential. Are there any questions of staff?
No letters.
No letters.
Any questions, Steph? Easy. All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, do you care to step forward? Give you one.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Nope. You don't have to.
You don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to. All right, we will now open us up to the public, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this application, feel free.
I have a question on the low-density housing.
Great, sir, could you please come up to the podium, please? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Kirk Pound, K-I-R-K, P-O-U-N-D, 529 Shaper Road, Forest Elm, Missouri, 63348.
Thanks.
On the low-density housing, is that single-family, is it apartments? What?
It's a single-family.
Okay, well, it said low-density, that's why I was asking clerk. Second.
Sir, we're addressing the commission now. If you have any questions, we can attempt to answer, staff can attempt to answer, and then, if there are any questions that the applicant needs to answer, he can come up at the very end and answer any of the questions brought for us. So if you just want to lay out your concerns before us, we can definitely follow up and make sure those.
Second question is the entry to the property, would it be off of Shaper Road, or would it be off Shaper Oaks? Because Shaper Oaks is a private road that's responsible for their own maintenance, whereas Shaper is St. Charles County. So I would be interested to know where the entry for the property would be located.
I can answer that. If you look at the aerial photo, this driveway, that is, they would use that driveway for the shared entrance and then run an easement over to, an easement or a private road to this property. They are only proposing to serve two residential units, because the minimum lot size would be three acres for each house.
And that driveway that you're referencing, is that the driveway off of Shaper Road?
Yes, it's off Shaper Road.
I believe that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this? If you want to have the applicant come up? Any of you? I think we've got the questions answered for the... All right. Bring it back before the commission. Any questions?
Make a motion to vote.
Okay, there's a motion to approve.
Sign it.
It's been seconded by Mr. Cronin. All right, Mr. Cronin, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Setely?
Yes.
All right, the motion is approved, 10 to nothing. All right, the next application before us is Application 19982 by Alan Funk, Paragon Custom Homes LLC, applicant/representative, LPG Contracting, Inc., owner. The application requests a rezoning change from A/Agricultural District, five acres minimum lot size, to RR Single Family Residential District, three acres minimum lot size. The property is located on the south side of Scotty Road, approximately 800 feet east of Donkey Road. The property consists of 33.55 acres and is located within Council District 1. Steph?
Thank you. The joining zonings and land uses are, the zoning in all directions is A/Agricultural, and the land uses are single-family residences to the north, south, and west, and an agricultural piece of property to the east. The 2025 Land Use Plan calls for the property to develop low-density residential. And this site was part of a plat in 2004. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the plat in 2004 for a 10-lot subdivision with 3.25 acre-sized lots. That plat expired in 2006, and also in 2006, the zoning districts were changed, and the agricultural district from being a three-acre minimum lot size to a five-acre minimum lot size. So to accomplish what they had wanted to do, they need to come back and apply for the rezoning to the RR zoning. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning change, because it is consistent with the master plan, which is low-density residential. And one of the things that will come up when we are doing the plat for the subdivision will be the extension of public services to the site, even though public services aren't available at this time. The master plan has this in the urban service area, and we'll call for it to be developed so that public services can easily be provided to these homes. And we can go into that more either later in this public hearing, or at the time when the preliminary plat comes in, if the zoning change is approved. So Steph is recommending approval of the three-acre zoning based on the other three-acre lots in the area and the 2025 master plan. Any questions of staff? Oh, and there were no letters. Questions?
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record?
My name is Dale Bax, 221 Point West Boulevard, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening, my name is Dale Bax, I'm with Bax Engineering. I'm here tonight representing Paragon Custom Homes on a 33.55 acre tract of ground in St. Charles County. As Jan has mentioned, this was a previously approved preliminary plan, did not have to go through a rezoning at the time in 2004 for a three-acre lot development. It was approved, it never did get built, obviously, and what we're here tonight to do is to go to an RR zoning, which would take this piece back to a three-acre development for single-family homes. The '06, '07, that's somewhere in that timeframe is when that zoning had changed, just right after this development kind of ceased. Basically, what we're trying to do here is, we're actually going to phase this thing in a couple different phases, but we're trying to just get the rezoning done at this particular time. So, obviously, you guys know where this tract is. I am certainly here to answer any questions that you might have for us.
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. All right, we will now open us up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak to this, please step forward. Line up, sir. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record?
Doug Polster, 2672 Scotty Road, Forest Elm, Missouri. My wife and I are on the Outlet A, and as a former partner in LPG Contracting, I was the one that did the, set up the original plat with the help of Bax Engineering. So, the reason I'm here to oppose it, because the introduction of public services and the RR zoning presents the potential for a utilization that I'm not in favor of. I mean, under that RR zoning, there is the potential for cluster homes to be built there. You know, the three-acre tracts are not, my preference would be to leave it as five-acre tracts, because then when the density increases, it's going to have an impact in the watershed on my lake. So, you know, I'm concerned with that. Once the public services become available, and the potential for multifamily housing, i.e. cluster homes, changes, you know, the program completely. Without the introduction of the public services, it makes it pretty much financially unlikely that that would occur. But as soon as the water and sewer becomes available, you know, I mean, to be able to change it from single-family houses on three-acre tracts into a cluster development, you know, I mean, it's kind of a preordained possibility. As we have all experienced in the last few years, the specific intent of the developer to do something with the development, i.e. in this case, the houses on three-acre tracts, nice idea, but if it doesn't work out, if it not, you know, successfully marketed, then, you know, one of the exit strategies is to be able to sell the property off as something else. With that zoning in place, with that RR zoning in place, that makes that a viable exit strategy. With the A zoning, it doesn't. And so, the A zoning preserves the integrity of houses on larger tracts. Once the RR zoning is approved and public services are brought to the site, that changes the complexion of everything. That possibly changes the complexion of everything.
I have a question, Doug. Where that little cutout, and there's a lake, is that where the lake is you're concerned about?
Yes.
For the runoff?
Yes, in that cutout, you can fantasy that one colored section, I mean, constant, that's the lake. Up in the front right quadrant there, that's the house.
That's the house.
House and barn, right.
And how big is your property then?
Twelve plus or minus.
Okay. Joe?
I have a question for staff and this gentleman. He's saying the cluster homes, I'm reading, are RR three-acre minimum lot size, okay?
Yeah, in the Unified Development Ordinances, in all of the residential districts, there is an opportunity to do cluster homes if there are, they have to have services available. The idea is, you would have the same number of homes on the property as is permitted under the RR zoning, and then, all of the units would be clustered in an area so that we can save, you know, save land, cut down on extension of facilities, stormwater, things of that nature.
But you're still talking one house per three acres, a total of 11 homes.
Correct, correct. And in the RR, the way we set up the cluster is, there's a maximum lot size, and the maximum lot size would be one acre. So they could have one acre or smaller lots, but they would only be permitted one unit per every three acres.
So the density would remain the same.
Density remains the same. It's just the units are clustered together.
And I guess the second question I have is for this gentleman. In '04, you went to this same board and requested three-acre lots, okay? And now you're opposing three-acre lots, okay?
I'm not opposing the RR zoning because of the potential for the...
But 11 homes were what you proposed in '04, and 11 homes is what's proposed now, so I'm wondering what changed your opinion in the last nine years?
Well, one of the things that changed my opinion in particular was, I did not know, until I walked in the door, what's being proposed, I still don't know. You know, I mean, now that I've seen the plat, I know that it was, I don't know if it's the identical plat, but it's pretty close to the plat that we had proposed. And it was my understanding, talking, when I came up to get the information, was that the plat, as it exists, has no impact on the decision for the zoning. You know, if the zoning were predicated on exactly this plat, you know, then I might look at it in a different way. But to just arbitrarily change the zoning from five-acre, single-family to three-acre single-family with potential for cluster homes, I'm not sure that I understand what Jan was saying, when, if you can have one house on a minimum one acre, how is it possible, then, that the density doesn't change?
No, it's, the maximum lot size is one acre, but they are only permitted one unit per every three acres. They can't get a density higher than what that zoning district, the underlying zoning district allows.
Oh, I see. So three houses could be together, but they wouldn't be on...
Right, each house would be on three.
Collectively, they'd be on nine acres.
Right.
But once that occurs, that can only occur if there is public water and sewer, or public sewer. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. They would have to provide some mechanism for sewage disposal. They could do a small MBR plant or something like that, something that would meet our ordinances. But yeah, all of the units would have to have some kind of community sewer system, whether it's hooked onto Wentzville, or they do their own.
Okay. And so, to further answer your question, I mean, at this point, to change that and allow that as a possibility, you know, obviously, because in today's environment, as we've seen proven so many times, you know, your best-laid plans kind of a thing is, yeah, we'd like to do this, and we'd like to do it on individual houses on three-acre tracts, if that doesn't work out, we're going to, you know, can that and move on to something else. So by having this zoning in place, that allows for something else to occur. By increasing the zoning from the present five acres per single-family, the only person, I guess, specifically that affects adversely is me, you know? So, you know, I mean, the five-acre zoning is only going to have, I don't know, did you lay out the five-acre thing? I'm sorry. I didn't know what the numbers, I don't know how the numbers changed.
Six to five.
From 11 down to six.
11 to six. Okay? So...
So if it was built like this, though, would you be opposed to it? Are you just opposed to the clusters possibility?
I'm opposed to the cluster possibility, yes. The zoning is the issue.
Right. Do they have to come before us to change the plat layout, if they go to clusters, or not?
Okay.
Well, no plat can submit.
We can only vote on the zoning change. We can't, we cannot vote on the plat, our ordinances do not allow us to do that. So we can't condition it anyway. The plat would come in to us, whether it was for a cluster or for three acres. That plat would come in to you guys, and you would evaluate that plat when that plat comes in. And we would notify the adjacent property owners on the plat.
So, in theory, you go build a house, you sell it, doesn't sell, you know, you sit around for a couple of years, you wait, you got your money tied up, I mean, you know, I did it for 35 years, I know exactly what happens. When it doesn't happen, you know, you turn around and you sell it some other way. And when you got this zoning in place, as opposed to the five-acre zoning, it gives you other exit strategies, you know?
Any other questions for this applicant? Yeah?
Just to follow up on Mr. Cronin's question. After having this conversation, we're talking about the density being the same as it was under the preliminary plat that was introduced some years ago. I understand the fact that you're opposed to the cluster home situation, but what exactly is it that you're opposed to? Is it just the way the cluster looks, or with the density being exactly the same as what would have been proposed years ago? I mean, it would be exactly the same for the same parcel of land that we're talking about.
Oh, density under cluster, you mean?
I mean, it would be the same total number of dwellings.
Okay, I was unaware of that.
Knowing that now, does that change your opinion?
No.
Because we're talking about the same number of folks basically being out there.
In fact, you could actually have greener space.
Exactly, that's why they were designed.
It could be clustered in the corner, and you'd have all green space everywhere else, which could actually be almost better, yes.
That's exactly why these were designed, was to save green space.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to have any input on that.
That's true.
That's true.
So if the zoning gets changed, that's allowable, and, you know, I just have to suffer. If the zoning doesn't get changed, then, you know, I mean, the only one that impacts is me.
Sort of question, when this was first proposed back in, what was that, '06 or '04? Were you living in the residence where you live now?
Yes.
Okay, so you proposed this in '04, you were part of the proposal?
Correct.
Thank you.
What Sandy is saying, it might be a blessing in disguise, if you think about it, you go home tonight, you might have more open green space, from your viewpoint, still maintaining the same amount of homes, instead of every direction you look at homes. Something to think about.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the thing that scares me to death is, I might. You know what I mean? See, because none of it is predicated. Once you change the zoning, the zoning's there, and then, what hap, you know, somebody decides, well, we got the zoning, and now we've got public services, so now we can go back and we'll apply for rezoning, because that didn't work. And it doesn't, you know, theoretically, or, you know, possibly, in that point in the future, where you can go, well, you know, that doesn't work for me, so we'll have to go get some other rezoning, so...
But, just to interrupt, if that were to occur, they're going to come back to us.
Yeah, you can be here too.
So, I mean, if the density is going to change, it will come back to us at that time, and you're certainly invited to come back. If that were to happen, if all of this were to happen, then...
I'm just asking you to put yourself in the same position. You're there, you're living there, the zoning is now going to change, which is going to allow a bunch of other possibilities, none of which you are, you have any, you, the owner, as you're sitting there on that piece of property, you don't have any say over. I mean, this didn't, this request is not predicated on this plat.
That's true.
You know, it's just, you can set this down and turn it around, because this request has nothing to do with this.
Back to my question, you were willing to accept that chance back in '04 and '06?
If you haven't changed your mind since '04?
Yeah.
Question for staff?
If this, what, two things would happen to happen before cluster homes could be built on this property, and for my other opinion, the cluster homes are fine. I've seen them in St. Paul, and they work pretty good, because it does preserve more green space, allows you more flexibility in the property. That being said, if four clusters could happen on this property, one would be, you're going to have water and sewer in that area, and I believe water and sewer is a long ways away with no plans from Wentzville, at least that's what Wentzville told me, heading that way. And number two, wouldn't they then have to submit a site plan for that cluster development?
Right, the plat would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we would hold the public hearing on it, adjacent property owners would be notified, so Ms. Polson would be notified of the public hearing for that development, for whatever development it's going to be, whether it's three-acre lots, five-acre lots, cluster, that plat's going to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the adjacent property owners are going to be notified.
So if and when Wentzville ever does get water and sewer up in that way, it's going to come before the same board, or probably, Kevin will be on the board, but the rest of us may be. And this gentleman will have the opportunity to present his case at that point.
Right, right.
And so, but then, is there, if that potential were being asked today, and you had to make the leap from A to that, you know, to some other type of development, in the future, what I'm saying is that we just keep edging ever closer to it.
No, I'm saying if there's a cluster of them down the road, and let's say it's five years from now, and I happen to be involved this again, I would look at how it would impact the neighbors like yourself, and I'd make the decision whether that cluster development is a good development or not, okay? But we're not there yet, okay? All we're doing right now is the same density it was proposed in '04, same density that's pretty well all over that district, okay? That part of the county.
Our job is...
Well, actually, that entire district is, most of it is A.
Most of it's A of three-acre lots, before the change was made to five acres back in '06.
Well, but it was all something before, I mean, what it is today is A.
It's been A since '59, but A allowed three-acre lots up to, I believe, '06, and it was changed in '06.
Actually, this area probably allowed 18,000 square-foot lots from '59 to '73, and from '73 to 2006, it was three-acre lots, and then 2006, five-acre lots.
The commission, our requirement is to, as always, look at each application as it comes before our board in that moment. That's what we're trying to do in that moment. Now, we can talk about potentials till the cows come home, and every single application that comes before this board, and we'd be here for even longer than we're, you know...
That's longer than here, because I'm not looking for the potential. I'm looking for it today.
And, you know, we appreciate that and your concerns, and I think we do need to move on, because I think there are more people in this room that wish to speak on this as well. But, you know, we, as a board, examine everything that comes before us, in, you know, based on the knowledge that we have right now, and yes, you're right, this doesn't, it's not predicated on this plat, it's not predicated on any plat. Whatever they decide to do with their, with this land, has to come back before this board, and everybody else is going to, you know, be here again, and whether it be two months from now, or two years from now, or 20 years from now, who knows? So, but thank you very much for... So, but thank you very much for voicing your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this application? Yeah, come on up, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you guide?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record?
Barry, Doris Ford, 366 Denke Road.
Go ahead.
In Forest Hill. I'm standing here to speak against the rezoning from five-acre minimum to three-acre. I heard someone make a statement that the proposal here was consistent with the other three acres in the area, I don't believe there's any three acres contiguous to that property at this point. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, the, we zoned an area to RR, to further north of this, on Denke Road, and there were a couple other parcels in the area. I said in the area, not adjacent.
Okay, very good. Well, in the picture that y'all sent out, I believe that everything that's contiguous to that property is not three acres, including myself. And I do have a residence at 366 Denke. And I, my prime objection to the increase in density from five acres to three acres is to sustain the rural aspect of that area. It is quite rural, for those of you who have driven by it and seen it, I think you'd agree. And it seems like we're dropping in something that, we're stepping up the game on the density in an area that otherwise, at least contiguous to this property, is not that way. So that's the basis of my concern. And of course, the fact that I'm right up next to it. Any questions?
No, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this application? All right, seeing none, we'll just, we'll bring it back before the commission. Any comments, further questions? Is there a motion to, all right, Mr. Griffin? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Cronin, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
All right, recommendation is approved, 10 to zero. Moving along, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our August meeting.
So moved.
Move to approve is read, seconded, all in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
All right, any other business? I'd like to welcome Kevin McBride, newest member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Do adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? All right.
Good evening.